I think we're going to go ahead and get started with the work session for Monday, November 17th, and the first thing, I guess, will be the Community Impact and Relations Department update. So would you like to introduce it, or just?
No, come on up.
Come on up.
This is our final department presentation for the council until we have a new library director, and we'll bring them in sometime later in 2026. So Manisha?
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, City Council members, staff, and members of the public. My name is Manisha Podell, and I am currently the Director of Community Impact and Relations Since we are a newly restructured department, the team and I had a strategic planning session earlier this year, this calendar year, and came up with our own mission, vision, and some of our goal plans, and this is obviously driven by the input and interactions that we've had with the public. The vision for our department is we want our city to be free of discrimination, informed, and led by residents. Our mission is to enforce civil rights laws, inform and engage our residents, and collaborate with communities and city departments to proactively meet the evolving needs of our community. Our department aims to create a positive and meaningful impact in Des Moines through engaging programs, community outreach activities, continuous improvement of city services, anti-discrimination trainings and investigation, projects to strengthen our civic infrastructure. Also, please stop me at any time that you have questions or comments. These are our core functions. They're just our four buckets of our work area. We enforce our municipal code, which is Chapter 62, State Civil Rights Act, which is Chapters 216, and federal civil rights laws, the Civil Rights Act, Fair Housing Act, and the Americans with Disabilities Act. And this is done in contract partnership with the Iowa Office of Civil Rights, which is the administrative arm of Iowa Civil Rights Commission and the U.S. Housing and Urban Development. Our community engagement bucket includes the programs and initiatives to increase civic participation and engagement. And under this bucket, we also put our work of supporting three boards and commissions, which is the Access Advisory Board, Human Rights Commission, and Youth Advisory Board, because we believe that that's an element of community engagement. Under the Education and Outreach Bucket, we have our Know Your Rights and Responsibilities trainings to comply with the civil rights laws, events and outreach activities for public education and outreach about department and municipal services. And the organizational partnership bucket that we see is very important is to create and strengthen our partnership with community-based organizations and groups. These are done through sponsorship opportunities for our programs and events, committee memberships that we participate in for sharing skills and resources and information-sharing partnerships, where we host programs like we did with the Des Moines Partnership about intergenerational workforce. And that was really interesting to have individuals from four different generations sit together and talk about challenges and benefits of working together as multiple generations. Currently, we have seven staff positions, and know that these are not their individual duties necessarily, but overall, these are their roles. The Community Relations Specialist position is there to create and lead the learning series and events at the community, the public outreach and engagement. So when you see us out at a table, tabling events or other events, this is this role, this position's duty, education tools, which is print and digital, whether those are our brochures or our print materials like posters, and also online tools. And this role also is currently participating in the Bloomberg Innovation Project that the mayor is leading. The next position is Community Liaison, who is currently working on creating a mediation program for our city, which would be a free opportunity for residents to participate in a volunteer mediation opportunity. And this would be for very minor dispute, like neighbors, tree branches are in my yard, I don't want to go talk to my neighbor, I don't feel comfortable, I need a third party to just sit in and listen for a conversation. This is still under development. Youth Engagement Events and Supporting of the Youth Advisory Board. The Special Projects Liaison is the individual who's responsible for offering Innovation Hour. These are learning series for staff primarily, but we do this in partnership with Polk County Human Resources as well, so their staff participate in these learning sessions. This person also supports the Engage DSM Program that all of you were here for the graduation of the second cohort. As the city's dedicated ADA Coordinator, this role also supports the Access Advisory Board, and is currently planning some projects and initiatives across different departments within the city to make our organization more accessible, and then is also a part of the Bloomberg Innovation Project. The Human Rights Specialist, it's titled as Human Relations Specialist at times, but Human Rights Specialist, there are two positions, once a senior who serves as a coach to the newer Human Rights Specialist. They both do compliance investigation. The senior position does the compliance monitoring. This is when there's a conciliation agreement, and we need to make sure that the parties are complying with the agreed terms, and creates, develops the training, and also delivers them. The Human Rights Specialist, in addition to the investigation, also does the training development, and we're currently working on a process improvement of our entire compliance division. And then, last but not the least, Intake Admin Assistant Position handles all of the inquiry and intake processing, and I'll walk through what that looks like shortly here, and then supports and leads the general office administration. The intake and inquiry processing is a significant amount of their work. Boards and Commission, like I shared, that there are three boards and commissions that we support, and this does not cover all of what they do. The Human Rights Commission currently has one advisory group. They have also done their strategic planning session recently and prioritized three topic areas, that they're currently working on listening and learning from community partners on housing, economic opportunities, and transportation, because these were the three topics that came up from the community. The Access Advisory Board reviews projects, city projects, and provides their input and insight and advices on any changes or modifications they may suggest. And Youth Advisory Board, many of you have participated in the youth experience simulation, and we will do this again in May of next year. And they are also working on a city beautification project, whether that's a mural or gardening project around the community in partnership with Parks and Recreation Department. Okay, here's our budget and impact of that budget on our community. So currently, our operating budget is $928,303 for fiscal year '26. This includes about $70,000 revenue we get from the state and the federal government, and that is for case processing and training and outreach efforts. The impact of our work overall in the community is that individual civil rights violations are thoroughly investigated and mitigated, and I want to emphasize in the mitigation piece, because it's hard to measure what we've prevented by doing trainings and outreach efforts. You know, people don't come to us saying, hey, I didn't violate someone's rights, or now I know better as a landlord or as a business, so I didn't do this. But that is also a crucial piece of our work. We have residents and businesses that are informed about their rights and responsibilities. Informed residents and partners always means strategic and meaningful decisions in the community, and that is through our programs of community outreach and programs like Engage DSM. Collaborative community partnerships to strengthen trust. Where in events tomorrow, we have the Refugee Alliance of Central Iowa's Refugee Summit, that a couple of us will go participate in, learn, engage, and continue to sustain and strengthen our partnership. Improved services, processes, and policies to meet relevant and evolving needs within our organization and also in the community. And this is if, you know, a staff member from another department calls and asks us about, hey, you know, is there a group that we can reach out to, or is there a process that you recommend that may be efficient or based on your knowledge of the community needs, what would you recommend? These are phone calls and emails and meetings that we engage in. Okay, this is the Compliance and Investigations, and I don't want to take too long explaining this, but please stop me if you have any questions. We are a neutral fact-finding agency, so we don't advocate for a complaining party or a responding party. We're just investigative body to enforce the Des Moines Municipal Code. We investigate, mediate, conciliate, and determine, which is writing a determination on the basis of merit of complaints alleging discriminatory practices based on protected classes. And this is for employment, housing, municipal practices. All of that's written in the code. We send municipal practices, specific complaints to the state because we would have conflict of interest, public accommodations and credit. And this is obviously done in partnership with the state and the federal government. Okay, right now, as we speak, this is as recent as basically last night. On average, we have about 10 to 18 calls or visits per day, and this does not include calls where people are calling to be connected with a different department, asking if we're a housing department, or needing resources about food, shelter, and we get a lot of those. Quite a bit of those calls where folks are asking about SNAP benefits, right, or stating that this is my human right, what about water, all sorts of calls. But these 10 to 18 calls or visits per day are specific about, hey, I think I'm discriminated against by my employer, my landlord out in a park, what can I, can you help me? And based on that, we will obviously screen those calls. Sometimes it's non-jurisdictional that it didn't happen in Des Moines, it didn't happen within 300 days, or that it was more of a conflict between a landlord and a tenant than anything discriminatory. Those, we just give them resources in the community. We don't say, hey, we can't help you. We always give resources. We have a list of legal resources, housing resources. But those that are jurisdictional will become an intake. And currently, we have five intakes. Cases and process are 12. Cases and determination, which is, we're getting close to the end of it, are two, and enforcement is, this is where the conciliation has reached. I'll briefly walk you through the investigative process that will hopefully help you understand that the 12 cases, some of them are three-month-old cases, some of them are three-and-a-half-year-old cases. So upon inquiry, individuals contact our office to file a complaint, or they think they want to file a complaint. They don't always end up in a complaint. We don't take every inquiry as an intake, just because that would be a waste of time of staff and individuals. Intakes are formal complaints signed by complainant, and this is when a case file is generated and assigned for an investigation. Before a case is created and assigned, there's an intake interview conducted by the intake officer. You know, sufficient evidence is received early on, so if it's a lease document, termination letter. We have seen a spike in employment discrimination cases lately, and it's primarily around age, and that seems to be a trend throughout the state. So we will ask for that termination letter, any emails, text messages, whatnot. Conciliation efforts are made throughout the process once a case is assigned to an investigator, because our effort is for folks to come to a mutual understanding and so that nobody's punished, so to speak. While that effort is made, investigation will continue. Investigator conducts interviews with complainant, respondent, witnesses, evidence is compiled, research is conducted. And this is the stage where it could take multiple months or even years, because our respondents are not responding, they changed their legal representation, so the new lawyers are asking for a month to prepare their response. Sometimes we've also had situations where our complainants have been incarcerated, so they're out of, you know, contact. And if we know, we don't close a case. Typically, if we don't hear from complainants for about four weeks or so, we would close, administratively close a case so that we're not hanging on to a case for too long. But sometimes they tell us that, you know, they're not able to connect with us for several weeks, and so we'll wait on that, because we don't know yet if there was a violation. And then after the investigation, we work on writing a determination. The determination writing could also take several weeks, depending on investigators working on multiple drafts. We review it together, and then what determination is, is for the investigation, based on the evidence provided, based on witnesses that they've interviewed, both parties that they've interviewed, whether there was a probable cause of discrimination. We cannot say, oh, we think you are discriminated against, so we believe we're going to, you know, that this is a legitimate case. We cannot do that. There have been cases where we've very strongly believed that there probably was a discrimination, but there was no evidence provided, and in that case, we have to maintain that neutrality. And then we reach closure. If it is a non-probable cause where we said we don't, there is no evidence that you're discriminated against, they have a 10-day appeal window. But if we determine that there was a discrimination, sometimes bigger companies, from, at least from my experience, refuse to conciliate, and they'll say, okay, we'll go to hearing, we'll go to court. And when that does happen, we've had one landlord who did that, and we took that case to an administrative law judge, and the landlord decided to conciliate the night, the afternoon before the hearing. And this is the piece, we work very closely with our legal department and our liaison to go to the ALJ or the Administrative Law Judge. So yeah, it will drag on for so long, and then the responding party will decide to conciliate at that point. We still want to conciliate, then take them to a judge. So there are two of those conciliated cases that are currently under enforcement. Okay, so this one, you should have printed copy of the slides as well. These are trainings and educations. Again, our goal is to prevent discrimination from happening, so we offer fair housing for landlords, tenants, and real estate professionals trainings. These are anywhere from two hours to four-hour-long sessions, anti-discrimination and public accommodation trainings, anti-discrimination and workplace trainings, fair housing and crime-free multi-housing training. This is in partnership with the police department. And we do anywhere from one-and-a-half hours to two-hour time slot for those trainings. Disability and Support Animals trainings. There's a lot of misunderstanding on what the emotional support animals are and service animals, so that clarification is very helpful for folks. So they've appreciated those sessions as well. And with the new ADA Coordinator on our team, new as in a year, a little over a year, but, you know, with our newly structured department, we will also be offering the ADA and ADA assessment processes, where this person will go to a site visit for buildings and structures and point out, you know, opportunities for those businesses to be more accessible. Okay. You will notice a slight change on, if you have printed copy of this, there was a duplication, so I made these edits. So if you notice that error, please note that that's the reason why. So programs that we offer from our department are Engage DSM, Resident Academy Program, that you all are familiar with, Innovation Hour, this is the learning opportunity dedicated for staff members, but we do this in partnership with Polk County, Special Projects Partnership, Bloomberg Innovation Track. The Community Relations Specialist is also working on the participatory budgeting opportunity. A lot of these are meetings, research, looking for ways for us to be innovative, and also improve our services and programs. And then the Community Mediation Program, like I said, it's currently in progress, because we're still looking for ways to pilot the program before we launch it. Okay, so Engage DSM, I'll briefly show, because this is a combination of the two cohorts that-
I grew up here in Des Moines, Iowa, and when I moved back, I decided if I was going to be here, I need to find a way to be engaged with the city. And so what I thought this would do would help me better understand the interacting pieces of city government, and how those spaces can work together, and where I would fit most comfortably at.
I was shocked that there were so many things that were out there that I could utilize that I had stopped.
Every single department knows so much more than what I understood. Everybody has a really big job, and I learned that each person that we spoke with was really committed to our city, and really committed to making it a better place for everyone. Everything looked really pretty good, just actually, so you could say I learned a lot about everything.
I learned a lot, a lot of places. I felt like I as a member to come in and act, have some impact, make some contact. I will apply for a board, follow the job.
I wish everybody could take this program, and everybody could have the opportunity to learn. I learned so much more about how things function within the city government, but also why, and that answered a lot of questions.
I think the more you know about your city and the more aged you are, I feel like it makes where you live a lot more fun.
Okay, well, first of all, I have to thank you all for attending the graduation, both cohorts. There will be more, so please, and I'll make sure that you receive the invitation for the graduation much in advance. But special thank you for also promoting the program. I know a lot of folks have come to us saying, yeah, I heard it from my councilperson, or I saw it on their Facebook, or, you know, them sharing about it. So that means a lot when you promote the work that we do, and also programs that people have thoroughly enjoyed. So thank you. And so this is data, this is a combination of the two cohorts, and we've had only two. How informed do you feel about the city of Des Moines, its operations and programs and services it offers? And before they participated in the six-week program, this was their response, majority of them said somewhat informed, which is number two, and neutral. And there were one or two that said they felt very informed. Then after the program, nobody said that they were not informed at all, or somewhat informed. They all felt, you know, one person said neutral, but most of them shared that they were very informed or felt strongly informed. So this shows that they're not just learning about our operations and how challenging sometimes decisions are, but they've, a lot of them have also applied to serve in boards and commissions. Well, when I say a lot, so far I've seen three that they've said. But out of, you know, almost 50 individuals, I would say that this program made them want to apply, and these are only the ones that I know. Yes.
Tell me how many were in the second class?
So we initially admitted 25, because that was our cap, and then on a regular basis, we had 21.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that your plan going forward, to keep it to 25?
You know, so it's funny you ask that. We launched the, we opened the applications on Friday, and we were at 18 applications already. So we'll, the task force, and I'll have to me to reconsider maybe extending it to, or, you know, growing it to 30 instead of 25. So if we cap it at 30, I think we'll be able to admit, have more people participate. Just because of the popularity, folks are calling, saying, hey, can I be on the list? We asked them to apply. Some of them don't want to wait until next fall, so we may increase the number to 30. Yeah. But more than that would be difficult with rooms, you know, booking rooms and just coordination. It's not as intimate of an opportunity.
Well, you know, we have a tight budget. Maybe you could start to charge for this.
Well, I don't know. I mean, maybe, right? If it's so popular that they may want to pay to participate. I don't know. I think this is a really good investment of our time. I mean, typically, that's what it is. Return on investment will be significant because of our community being so informed and engaged. Yeah, we've had individuals that have felt uncomfortable coming to certain spaces, and they, after the program, they said, oh, I actually, I'm glad that I went to that neighborhood. Okay, so for education and outreach, already shared that we are, you'll see at a large event, tabling and outreach efforts, small group and organization presentations. We do it for free, so if there's an organization that wants to learn about services, civil rights work, or just in general about city, we will go to them. Digital engagement, which is both social media and newsletters and emails. Print materials and resources, we've updated our print materials as well. Panel discussions, this is a great learning opportunity, not just for our staff, but also for our community, and organizational and committee partnerships. And what I'll say about education and outreach is it's similar to mitigating civil rights violations, is it's difficult to measure how people decide it differently, or how decisions are made differently for the better after learning and after engaging these opportunities. Right? When you know better, you do better, but then how do you measure how you did better from yesterday? So there's been appreciation for the learning opportunities that we provide. It's just difficult to measure how decisions are better than yesterday. So thank you again for your support and for listening to me for the last 25 minutes. Any questions, any comments?
Does anyone have any questions? If not, thank you for the work you do. I know the Engage DSM, I just talked to somebody who wants to be on a board and commission yesterday, so that had been through the class. So thank you for that, because it has made a huge impact. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
So I guess next up is tax abatement schedule.
So yeah, we've had several council members ask if there was an opportunity to schedule a workshop to talk about abatement, and so Cody has been working diligently on this. We've put together some staff proposals, had some communication out in the public, so we wanted to bring this to you to see what further guidance you would want us to spend more time on, or potentially tweak. So with that, I'll let Cody present what we've got.
Very good. Mayor Bozen, members of council, good morning. I'm Cody Christensen, Development Services Director. Much like Scott said, I'm here this morning to talk about some recommended updates to the city's urban revitalization plan, more commonly known as tax abatement. A number of things go into the reason why we're here today. Recent state code changes that have impacted city budget, the recent receive and file of the citywide housing strategy that identified phasing out tax abatement as one of the options for freeing up revenues for other incentive options. Those are the primary reasons why we're here today. So what we're going to talk about, I'm going to go through what we have in our current tax abatement plan. We're also going to take a look at what others in the metro area offer for tax abatement. Talk a little bit about recent state code impacts and how they impact the tax payment program itself. We'll review the city revenue impacts of our current plan, and also the potential revenue impacts of changes that we have available to make. I'll be seeking your feedback. Ultimately, we'd like to gain a consensus of the direction to go from here, and we'll talk a little bit about next steps. Now, the thing that I want everybody to keep in mind as I go through this presentation is that the overall goal and the recommendations that you're about to hear are to free up property tax revenue to make it available for other incentive options. There can be a knee-jerk reaction along the lines of, oh, my gosh, they're talking about just doing away with this incentive. And really, the overall goal is to free up revenue that's currently tied up in this form of incentive to make it available to implement in other ways. So I just want everyone to keep that in mind as we move forward. This slide shows what we currently offer for tax abatement in Des Moines. This is our, all of our tax abatement schedules. I won't go into all of the details, but I'll provide a little bit here. This plan, at the moment, is valid through the end of 2028. So any project that receives a permit and is by the end of 2028, and is completed by the end of 2029, is eligible to receive any of these schedules that it qualifies for. So some highlights. Right now, we offer 10-year, 100% abatement for any improvement to an existing residential property across the entire city, whether that be a single-family home or a high-density apartment building. We have a couple of targeted areas. We have what's been commonly known as the spider map, which is our targeted high-density residential area. It covers downtown and some of the corridors leading into downtown, and that's been in effect for the past 10 years. In that area, new multifamily construction is eligible for a 10-year declining schedule. In that area, new multifamily construction is eligible for a 10-year declining schedule. And that same schedule is also available for new detached, single-family residential in a separate targeted area called the low-density, the targeted low-density residential area, which covers a similar span across downtown and some of the surrounding neighborhoods. Those, those are the easy ones. Once we start getting into further down the list here, it gets a little more complex because we do offer a number of options. We start getting into the missing middle product. Now, the thing that we did the last, with the last tax payment update is we made the missing middle schedules. Those are schedules that are available for any residential structure that contains between 2 and 12 dwelling units. There's two options available for those, those new builds. There's a nine-year declining schedule for those that have exterior walls with at least R20 insulation and electric vehicle charging infrastructure in place. And for those that do not, there's a, an eight-year declining schedule. Similarly, with the detached, single-family, those in the targeted low-density area that do the sustainability options of the additional insulation and EV charging are eligible to receive the 10-year declining schedule. Those that are not are eligible to receive the nine-year declining schedule. Once we get out of the targeted areas and out of the, the missing middle housing, as you work your way further down the list, we have two additional schedules, a six-year declining and a five-year declining. These are the schedules that are available for new detached, single-family homes built anywhere outside of those targeted areas. So our typical greenfield development is eligible to receive either of these two options. Those that provide the sustainability features of the additional insulation and the EV charging are eligible for the six-year, and those that do not are eligible for the five-year. That covers all of our current schedules for residential. At the bottom of this slide shows our two schedules that are available for commercial projects. We have two options, and these are the choice of the property owner. They can choose which schedule to pursue, the 10-year declining schedule and the three-year 100% schedule. For new construction and commercial and sizable alterations and additions, we also have another, another list of sustainability features that those properties must meet in order to be eligible for these schedules. Certainly.
When you started, you said that this, this schedule is in place until 2028, I believe you said. And this would be good until 2028.
Yep.
But then I'm looking at the email that you sent, and it says phasing. The current plan will continue being available for the following projects. If it's permitted by 123125, completed by 1226, it looks like the phasing is different.
Under the.
Am I not understanding?
So the, under the proposed updates, those would shorten the duration of the current plan.
So this schedule wouldn't be in place until?
Correct. It would, it would continue this, these schedules for a shorter duration. So it's essentially the proposals that are, that have been presented would shorten the duration of the current plan to phase it out over the next two years.
Okay, because some of them, like, they have to be completed by 123126.
Yes, and what we've, what we've done in the past when we've updated tax abatement is we've, we've done a phasing plan. So like for detached, single-family and missing middle housing, we've typically gone over the course of two years to allow an additional year for permits to be obtained and the year beyond that for construction to be completed. That's, that's what was in the, in the email. One thing I will point out is the, one of the new things that came about with this, this schedule that we're looking at right here was the sustainability options for the, the single-family and the missing middle. It's been a good way to test just the effectiveness of this two, the two options, where right now, any builder can build just a minimum code and receive either the five-year or the eight-year schedule for detached, single-family or missing middle. And then they can choose to go and install minimum R20 exterior walls and an EV charging circuit in the garage and be eligible for another year of 100% abatement. We have a few that have done that, but the numbers show that on the single-family, detached, single-family side, 95% of the abatement applications that we've approved over the past year have chosen not to pursue that, those sustainability features. On the missing middle side, the townhomes, we've seen a little bit more, but still 65% of those that we've approved in the last year have not. They've gone for the lesser schedule without pursuing the additional sustainability features.
Differences in terms of investing in that upfront?
I, I don't have those numbers.
Because like the EV readiness is just wiring, right?
Either, there's, there's two options for that. Either a conduit in a box and space and electrical panel, or run an actual 40-amp circuit. Yes.
Over my head, but just following up on Josh's, is it, is it a matter of, is it a matter of the wiring from the box to this, to the plug-in in the garage or whatever? Or does it, is it a different box and, and load of electricity that they need?
If, if I were to guess, I would say that the, the EV charging circuit is not what causes most builders to not pursue that option. I would assume it's the additional insulation in the exterior walls, where the, the typical way to approach that is to go from 2x4 exterior walls to 2x6, which then adds expense, also impacts the layout of the plans. That, that's what I would assume is the larger cost.
Builders that are building, what the difference in the cost is? Have we reached out to them?
We did go through that when those, these items first were implemented into the code. And I don't, I don't recall what those numbers were. So this, this slide shows a comparison. The previous slide is what we currently offer in Des Moines. This slide shows what's offered in other communities throughout the metro. So starting at the top for residential tax abatement, City of Altoona offers a five-year 100% schedule on the first $75,000 of value for new low-density residential. That's your detached, single-family homes. El Carte offers the same five-year 100% on the first $75,000. Pleasant Hill actually offers the, the highest level of abatement for new single-family, the five-year declining schedule. And then Windsor Heights offers a four-year declining schedule, again, on the first $75,000 of value for both low-density and high-density residential. Other communities have had their tax payment programs expire, or they've chosen to terminate them in the past few years. So this is what we currently have available in metro area. The commercial side is a little more all over the board. Ankeny does a five-year declining schedule citywide, and they also have a targeted area in their, their downtown where they offer a more lucrative 10-year declining schedule. Bondurant offers 300% as well as a six-year declining. Carlisle does a five-year declining, El Carte three-year 100%. I've got, identified as declining up there. Norwalk, Pleasant Hill and Windsor Heights all offer a five-year declining schedule for commercial abatement. At the state level.
Cody, going back to the last slide, so obviously there's cities not represented on that slide. Does that mean that they are not offering anything?
If they're not shown here, they don't offer tax abatement.
Walkie.
Yep.
Johnston isn't in there either.
So do they other, offer other incentives?
Many, many communities offer tax increment financing.
It's all true.
Much, much like we do.
No tax abatement on a lot of them. Okay.
Correct. It's, yeah, yep. Yep, there's more limitations on residential tax increment financing. But that's what, that's what many offer to maintain their, their incentive programs. And we'll, we can talk a little bit more about these options, too. The general premise here with these proposals is to free up revenue to be used for other, other programs. And the benefit of tax abatement for the, for us, for the city is that tax abatement does not require an upfront check to be written. But the trade-off for that is that it's, it's not as dynamic. It doesn't allow negotiation. It's more challenging to change. We don't update our tax abatement plan frequently. That's some things to keep, to keep in mind as we're considering these options is how we want to use the, the property tax revenue to continue incentivizing development and to get the things going in the targeted areas or that we have identified the need for, to be, to be moved forward. Some other things to consider are the state code impacts. Recent changes to the state's, again, the property tax, property tax codes have impacted residential tax abatement. So as of July 1st, 2024, the school district levies are now protected from residential tax abatement. So what that means is any new single-family home, any apartment building, any tax abatement that's offered for residential improvement is not going to abate the school district tax levy. I, I understand the concept. There's an impact there with additional families that have a demand for those school districts. What that means financially is that the, the benefit of tax abatement for the residential property owner has just been decreased by about one-third because those school district levies constitute about one-third of the total, total property tax bill for any residential property in the, in the Des Moines area. In Des Moines, those, we have a number of school districts here. Those levies range anywhere from 1461 per thousand to 1793 per thousand dollars valuation. This is a key piece, especially with our, with our multifamily projects, because tax abatement previously had a benefit beyond tax increment financing because tax abatement provided the additional value of the, of that school district levy. Now, the, the ball field has essentially been leveled between tax abatement and tax increment financing. One thing to keep in mind is we're looking at the, the incentive options for multifamily. On the commercial side, not that it impacts the actual, the actual financing, but it does add an additional hurdle, and it also adds another, another risk element. So for a commercial project to receive tax abatement, it also has to, to, to have a minimum assessment agreement recorded for the duration of that, of that, that abatement schedule. So for example, a new commercial building is built, it's worth a million dollars. It has, in order to receive tax abatement for that million dollars of additional value, it had, a minimum assessment agreement has to be recorded to that property. Say if that property is going after the 10-year declining schedule, that minimum assessment agreement would be there for 10 years. Even if that property burns down six months after it's occupied and is worth zero, it will still be taxed at the $1 million minimum assessed value. So there are likely options where we can terminate the tax abatement schedule for that property in that event, but it is something that adds additional risk to those property owners, and it makes them pause when we're talking to them about commercial tax abatement. Part of the reason why we're recommending a three-year 100% schedule as opposed to the 10-year declining. Now I'll start getting into some more of the, more of the numbers that are more of a direct, have more of a direct impact on our decisions that we can make. So we analyzed all the, the tax abatement data from Polk County, the Polk County Assessor's Office. It's out there available for anyone to access, available for any community in the metro area. And as of January 1st of 2025, we have committed $46.5 million of city property tax revenue to tax abatement. Now, there are some assumptions that go into that. That's based on today's city tax levy and today's rollback rates. So it will take 10 years for all of that, all of those abatement schedules to, to reach their end. But over the course of those next 10 years, as of, like I said, the beginning of this year, we have, we have committed to give up $46.5 million of potential property tax revenue. So there's nothing we can do about that. That is, that has already been established. The next number is what I want to talk about. If we were to continue our current tax abatement plan for the next 10 years, again, with the assumptions of our current tax rate and our current rollback rates and our current level of development, we would commit to give up an additional $146 million in potential city property tax revenue. That's just for the city of Des Moines. That's not the other taxing entities. So, yep, that, that includes everything.
But what's the impact? If, it's kind of like the old TIF story. If, if, if you don't have new building, you don't have any of this anyway. So.
There's, there's certainly a benefit that comes.
Years, you're left with flat. I mean, think of the, think of the impact that you would have after that 10 years. And you've got people moving in, you've got people building, that's jobs, infrastructure, all the things that go into the city. So I just have a little trouble with this saying, you know, 146 million. That's with, with new build. If people don't build, if builders say, I'm done, I won't be in Des Moines, this, this really is a moot point. It doesn't mean anything.
Certainly, if, if all, if all incentives were terminated and all buildings stopped, yes, there would be a long-range impact. But what we're talking about is taking some of this 146 million and freeing that up to be adjusted and shifted into other, other incentive mechanisms.
Into nonprofits. I mean, let's talk about it. I love the ION program. Don't get me wrong. The ION program is good. When you look at the, at the city strategic plan, it talks about we need to give more money to Invest DSM, more money for the ION program. Those are all good, but at the cost of bringing in new development, new, new jobs, new, new people coming into our city.
So when I, when I think about the.
Put it into, I mean, I, I agree. We've got old houses and people need help getting things fixed up and repaired. It's, you know, a lot of elderly and older or disabled people. I, I understand that. But think of the impact that the new developments have.
Yeah, it's, it's something that we absolutely need to think about is where we want, if we choose to shift this funding around, where we, what we want to shift it into. Things like, if you look at the housing strategy, it suggests things like ION, like Invest DSM. I also see opportunities with Habitat for Humanity, Neighborhood Finance Corporation, Neighborhood Development Corporation, other, other internal programs, matching grants, forgivable loans. We could, we could utilize this for some sort of a rebate program. I think there's other, there are a number of other options.
A rebate for all builders or just the nonprofits that are built?
No, I think there's, we're talking about a wide, a wide range. So some, we could shift some funding to our nonprofit partners. We could also use some funding for programs that would be available for anyone who builds the product that we're seeking.
So are you going to go into the more detail later on, in your presentation on that?
I, I don't have the detailed recommendations on that. Step one is to identify if council is interested in the concept of freeing up revenue. And this is part of the reason why the proposal is to phase, phase out the program so we can identify just what level of revenue is available and then dive into, okay, now let's start working on these programs, these other programs that are going to maintain that level of development that we're currently seeing.
I'll, I'll, I'll save my thoughts or opinions for when you're done, but the 146 million, is that the cumulative amount if the plan stays in for 10 years? So does that count taxes from year 11? So does that count taxes from year 11 to 22 because some of them are a 10 year schedule?
It, it does.
So this is really a, like this is a 20 year swath of revenue.
Yes.
Even, even though the, because the plan would be in place.
Right.
10 years.
Yep.
And, and this is revenue from commercial and all the residential.
It is.
Yes. All right.
Yep.
That helps. I'm also looking at your slideshow, so I know the next slide and.
Sure.
I have a question about that too.
Yep. So as, as I'm talking, we'll get into more, more details associated with each proposal. But in the other slides, you will see the total, the total potential savings. That is everything that we will commit through the plan until the tax abatement schedule has reached its end. So if we were to continue the current plan for another 10 years, we would see this, this value hit after 20 years. So at the end of 20 years is when all of those schedules would, would reach their end. And so it is, it is a long, a long duration. Now, like I said, how we came up with these projections was we took the last 10 years of tax abatement data from the Polk County Assessors page. We identified the initial abated value for the various types of projects and those projects are listed up here. Had to identify some certain categories. And within each category, within each year, we identified the initial abated value. And then we took those and adjusted them for the rate of appreciation of property over the past 10 years. So we could normalize that value and come up with the, the annual average value in 2025 valuation. So that's what you're seeing on this slide is in 2025 dollars, the average amount of value, that's assessed value, not, this is, this is not a potential city property tax revenue. This is assessed value that we've abated on average every year for the past 10 years.
So just to help, help me compare to the last slide. I build a new house, it's $300,000 and I pay $5,000 in property taxes.
Yep. So, so these, these numbers are what lean into the calculation. So for the commercial and industrial, we've got roughly an 85% rollback. So multiply the 27 and a half million by point eight five and then divide by a thousand, multiply by 16.61 and that gives you the city property tax revenue that's associated with that.
For that, and this is just that year?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yep.
If, if all, I mean, all these numbers are right, I'm not speeding that. Then at the bottom, is it two, 214 times five years, times 10 years if we were taking it overtime?
Right. So it, it, it varies by the schedule. So right, right now we have, I think a total of 1.6 billion, 1.3 billion of abated value. But realize that's everything we've abated over the last 10 years. So it, it accumulates with each, with each additional year. But with each additional year, there's that value times the rollback, times the potential, to determine the, the potential revenue. So this just gives an idea of the amount of assessed value that we're abating each year with our tax abatement program.
Cody, is this an accurate statement? I'm using Chris's example, over 10 years, the assessed value of that home is going to increase. They are still abated based on the new assessed value. So as the assessed value goes up, they are real, that buyer is realizing.
So that, that, that's a really good question and it's something that we often are hit with from property owners. Because property owners that opt and buy property are informed that they have 100% tax abatement. What that means is they are abated 100% of the value that's added that year. And that's a fixed value that carries out through the duration of the schedule. So if you're, if you're, if you have $200,000 that's abated today, 10 years down the road, that 200,000 has increased to say 300,000. You're paying taxes on that additional $100,000 at the end because the abatement just applies that, an original value and it does not increase with appreciation.
Thank you.
Yep. Some of the other things that, that make it challenging are there's still property value that's not added. And I won't get into those details, but we, we field numerous phone calls from property owners and work them through how the, how the abatement program works. It's, it's, it is confusing. So generally recommendations, I've kind of been hitting on this already, but the proposals are to update the schedules and phase them in over the next two years. What we still have a lot of work to do would be to develop other incentive programs, identify what amount of revenue we're willing to, to realign and free up for other programs and then start teeing up those programs so we can administer them. The goal will be to have zero negative impact on our level of development and ideally have a positive impact on our levels of development through administering programs that give us more bang for the buck. We're also proposing to move the design requirements. I've talked about the sustainability criteria for residential as well as commercial. Our proposal is to remove those from the tax abatement plan and put them into city codes. Chapter 135 is likely the most, the most logical place for those to be, to be located. And on the single family residential side, a lot of those already exist there today. They're just exempted because of recent state code changes.
So, so let me clarify. So if I build a new house, I have to put in an EV charging station?
That, that's.
If it goes to municipal code, that's what you're saying?
That's, that's where I'm looking for consensus from council.
And I have to build two by six construction?
That's, that's one option is, like I say, we have, we have these sustainability options. The, the options are to decide what level of sustainability requirements we apply.
Okay.
So that's where I will be looking for feedback or how we move, if we, if council chooses to move forward with this proposal, that would tee up another discussion for identifying more of those factors and running that through the Plan and Zoning Commission and then coming back to city council for another vote on what those design requirements are to be eligible for the tax abatement program that, that we decided to move forward with.
And.
Well, so the, the feedback or the data that you gave us, I mean, the additional year of incentive is not enough to get folks to build the, I mean, not, not enough to get the majority of folks to build because of, because the insulation is, and the two by six construction that goes along with that is enough of a cost that folks aren't building there. To me, that seems like we keep that as the additional year of tax abatement rather than put it in code until we start getting the feedback that folks are, are actually, until the market has moved to the point where that is kind of basis, right? I mean, if, if you had half of, half or more of all folks taking advantage of that incentive, it might mean that the incentive is too rich to get that particular behavior. But when you have 5% of all building taking advantage of that incentive, it means that that incentive is serving exactly the type of purpose it's intended to because most people wouldn't do it without, without the incentive.
So, so I would, I would draw the conclusion that the, if, if the goal is to promote more of those sustainability features and more construction, I would say that our current approach is failing. Because 95% of the new homes that are built are not doing it. So that tells me that that additional year of abatement is not sufficient enough to incentivize that, that construction.
And Cody, if I could, because this might be a good time to remind everyone that you're dealing with two parties when you talk about new construction. The builder and then the actual owner event that may not even be identified during construction.
Right.
And so the builder's taking that risk. And so that's why this second bullet point, develop other incentive programs, there's an opportunity to say, let's target what it is we want. If it is the additional insulation, then let's put a dollar rebate on that amount. So it's known that that would be available for a certain square footage, possibly.
Now, that's what I was going to ask is that when we're talking about redesign, it would be instead of, we could incentivize people in other ways to really get it done because obviously it is a failure if only 5% are taking it. So my thought would be if you're going to redesign, the dollars redirect it so people, if they say it's too expensive, then how do we incentivize people to do it where it gets done? If that is a goal that we have and that's another discussion we'll have to have. But within the dollars that open up, maybe there's a way to.
Yeah, and that's, and that's, like I said, there's a lot of work yet to be done. We're really at step one here is to identify what the, what, what the palette is of city council.
Cody, may you move on to the next slide? I, I'd like to just make a few comments. I have been bullish on addressing this tax abatement and I've used terminology rather loosely saying, I think we pass out tax abatement like candy some. And I think we have gotten in over our head by being too generous. Having said that, we need additional information, so I thank you for bringing this, starting this process and bringing it forward. For next steps, I see, for example, a roundtable discussion with developers, with some city council people, with staff, so that we can ask these questions. How much does it cost to add insulation? What does it cost for two by six walls? They are the people who are investing in the city and just for general information purposes, Rachel Flint with Hubble and their, Hubble is here, emailed me some additional data in addition to what you provided that was eye opening to me. And the most eye opening piece of information, the sheets aren't numbered, but the, I was shocked at how few homes were building in the city of.
And, and some of, so I, I had sent out one, one email that had some numbers on it with a typo. Like I had, I, in the email, I'd identified that there was an average of 14 new homes abated per year. That, that was a typo. It's actually 175 new detached single family on average over the past 10 years.
That's still an incredibly low, low number of homes. And to add to the complexity of this issue, and it is complex, when we build in the city of Des Moines, the cost to build in the city of Des Moines is just the same as it costs to build in any of the suburbs, but the sale prices in Des Moines don't reach the level. And it, it certainly has to do with the cost of the lot, the square footage of the homes, the quality of what's happening in the homes, but it goes beyond that. It just, the houses in Des Moines don't bring as much typically. And for commercial construction, that's where I really see the pain. Because I look at rents out in the suburbs for retail spaces and compare them for a brand new building in Des Moines and how much significantly less rent is collected in Des Moines and it costs the exact same amount to build. Maybe a little bit less because cities like West Des Moines require almost all brick construction. We don't do that. But it's, it's striking. So if we're going to have construction in Des Moines and, and to Linda's point, bringing more people into the city, we're going to have to do something. The question is how much and for how long? And at the roundtable discussion, I'd like to hear from those who are investing in our city by building homes, most of them speculative, is my assumption, that may not be correct. They have to weigh how long of an abatement is really attractive to the buyers. And I have also been an advocate and I've talked to, to some of my fellow council members on this item. I built the seven townhomes at 40th and Grand. I've never done anything like that before. I did it, may not do it again. I did it because people in the neighborhood approached me and they wanted to stay in the neighborhood. These are very expensive units. And because they're townhomes, they have nine years of tax abatement. And I can't say that any of my buyers, it would have mattered whether they had that much tax abatement or not, or any. I can tell you that it was a hook. It definitely got people's attention when we talk about tech, tax abatement. And one of my buyers was paying $36,000 a year in taxes on her home south of Grand. And I believe all of my buyers paid cash for their homes. So I'm just saying, there is a place to reduce tax abatement and bring those monies into the coffers. I ran on this a year and a half ago because I, in my mind, was seeking and still am seeking funds to address homelessness, housing affordability, et cetera. And I fear that the reduction of tax abatement, which will add dollars to the coffer, are going to be used to fill the gaps in our budget. I, I really fear that. And I hope that, this is just a comment, as we continue into the next budget cycle, to get really hard in reducing expenditures so we still have funds to help deal with homelessness and housing affordability and it not just go to plug holes. Anyway, thank you. So again, my recommendation is let's have a roundtable, at least one discussion with those who are knowledgeable in the development and construction industry, so that we can ask some of these questions.
Yeah, and I, I think that what would be valuable in that discussion is if, if we can approach that with the means of, with, with the assumption that we are, we, the city is planning to adjust the tax abatement schedule and planning to offer other incentive options. So I would like to hear from the builders, what other sorts of incentive options would continue the development that we've been seeing in Des Moines? Because as we've had previous discussions like about the sustainability options, some of the feedback that we've, that we've received is, well, an additional year of abatement doesn't help the developer or the builder that much. That goes towards, to the property owner, where that lack of an upfront incentive makes it more challenging to add those additional features that have an upfront cost. Now, the feedback that we have received from builders is that tax abatement is a good marketing tool and it does help buyers get into homes that are at a higher value. And so it does have value. And yeah, we're certainly looking forward to having more of those conversations about how we can, if council is interested in this concept, about how we can go forward with identifying other incentive options that will still achieve the goals.
Cody, I would just all, also offer a word of thanks to you for being open to analyzing these types of things. And I am reminded that with your help and working Carl, with you, with developers on the zoning ordinance and the building code, Carl, you hosted some roundtables and out of that came the modifications that we have been making to the code, such as doing away with that $500,000 in aggregate item that triggered site plan compliance, et cetera. So these, these meetings are helpful. Thanks for.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what, that's what the development services team does. So we're, we're here to find solutions. And, and I'll add on to that a little bit. The, like I said, the concepts here are free up the tax abatement revenues for other sorts so they can be used elsewhere. And in that recommendation to move from the tax abatement plan to city code, those amendments chapter 135 are a fine example. We've made five or six rounds of amendments to that code this year. And that gives us a lot more ability to make changes, to reassess and evaluate the approach that we're taking and make adjustments so we can better align our incentive programs with the goals, with the city's goals. But kind of the very basic premise of that recommendation, that gives us more, it leaves us with a more dynamic tool.
So Cody, do you think that the driver for this, this discussion is about our budget issues or finding a better path to incentivize building in Des Moines?
I, I think what we, what came out of the housing strategy was finding better tools. I, I think what we, what came out of the housing strategy was finding better tools. Align, align our, align our resources with tools that will get more bang for the buck, quite frankly.
Without excess, because they're tied to valuation as opposed to maybe the actual cost to add a feature to a home. And we can get to the nuts and bolts of that with our partners. It's like a down payment assistance program through NFC, which was brought up in the housing strategy. Uh, I can imagine that being a very huge incentive, uh, to get people into new homes.
I'd, I'll, I'll pass something around if anybody wants it. Here it is. Cody, you might want to see this. I, I want to underscore, and I think my colleagues have, have said this. I, I really, and Cody, first off, he was traveling out of town last week. He sent that email to us with kind of a summary and, um, from his, I don't know, eight hour drive or 10 hour drive across the country. He was, uh, communicating back and forth with me and I really appreciate that. And, uh, shared, shared a bunch of documents. I, I just fundamentally feel like we're start, starting in the wrong spot. And I think, and, and I shared this with Cody. I think we need some specific goals about what we want to see happen in development. Because if we're looking at development for what the two, three, five, or 10 year cycle is of abatement, we're making bad decisions because all those properties right now that are abated for three and a half years or four and a half years are paying taxes for the next 50, 100 years. And I think we have to be pro development when we, when we do this. This is information, uh, Mike, Mike alluded to, to some information. I, I had, um, I had more information. I, I look at this stuff all the time. You guys have probably heard me say this, like, I think being on the city council where all of our revenue comes from property, it would be like owning a restaurant and not caring about the food. We have to care about the property and what drives value in, in our community. That's where we get all of our revenue. That's, that's, the demand for our property is where, where we, where we get revenue. So, so we have to be completely concerned about that. I'd, I'd like to know before we go out to the community, what is our goal? Like of new, new home construction over the last three years? This is January to September each year. So we don't, I didn't have a full year for 2025 yet, so I just use the. Yeah, I think we probably could. I, I actually was thinking he was, I'm sorry, Carol. It's going to be hard to see, but I'll get anybody a copy of it that wants it. So on the left is 2023, 2024, in the middle, 2025. On the right, the three year totals, I've added a column. So if you see the highlighted Des Moines, it says 396, uh, permits for single family homes. And that's 7.2% of all the single family homes built in the metro. For townhouses, we built 128 over the, uh, three year period. That's 6% of the total. And for multifamily, we, we permitted 1,300-ish units. I assume that's units. And that's 35% of the total. I think we, like, I think we have to have some goals on what is it? What level of growth do we need in order to get where we want to be? Not next year or in three years, but in 10 or 20 years. And I agree with Mike that we need to find the money to make sure that we provide the basic services. But we're not going to, we're not going to find the money by adjusting the abatement schedule by 10, 20, or 30%. We're going to find the money by making sure that there's demand to buy houses in Des Moines that people want to live in, and we double that number over the next six years, three years, whatever it is. I, I don't think we're prepared for that. And I think we really have to start with, with that model. What's, what's the market share we want in Des Moines? What would we feel good about? And how many new homes and how many new units do we need to have a sustainable budget? And then we decide the incentives that we want to put out there in order to drive that will help us, will help us get there. I think when we start to use the abatement schedule for anything other than, than an incentive to get what we want and what we need is growth. Joe's not here today. We have acres and acres and acres of development land on the south side. Linda, um, has acres and acres of development land on the northeast side. There's infill lots throughout this community. We need to grow. Point number one. Point number two, something that's not come up here at all, which is an absolute necessity for us to judge whatever proposals come back, is that we have a crushing tax load on our citizens. Crushing. And this year, the council's raised the tax on garbage, sanitary store, swimming water sewer, franchise fee. I think most of us agree that we've done all that and we haven't even raised taxes for the top priority, at least what we said in a workshop a month ago, that, uh, fully funding the, the lifesavers, our, our fire department is most important. We do have an obligation, if we want to see development, to try and incentivize it in light of the fact that we have a tremendous tax load on our, on our citizens. And, and we can't ignore that piece. If you look at who is, if you look at who else has abatement, it's either other cities that have a higher tax rate or they're landlocked. We happen to be both in a lot of areas of the city. And so we, we, we need to make sure that we have a plan that gives an incentive for people to move here and buy here. I, I, I think, I think we're close. I mean, I, I proposed last time that we cut back from, you know, on residential from five to, you know, four and a half. I think we should cut back again. But I also think we have to do it in light of what are our overall goals? We're trying to get development to happen in our community. The, the, um, I, I totally support talking to people. I love opening up our agenda and seeing that we have tax abatements on there. Tonight, I think we have 160-ish. I, I think it's really fair to go to those people. I mean, we're, we're passing tax abatement for them the same day we're talking about it, but not really evaluating what, what they would have done or what options they would have considered if there was no abatement. Or we, 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 we have developers for sure. We should do that. But I also think we have real life people that live here. The last thing, as much as I talk about the demand for new home construction, new townhouses, I want somebody to build me a townhouse, Mike, so you probably have another project to do.
Or somebody else.
The, uh, uh, I, I also want to say something about phasing out of the investment we allow and incentivize for our current residents. Probably the piece, and I, I said this to Cody at the beginning of mine, the piece that I'd have the hardest time giving up is providing an incentive for our existing residents who love, um, their home and their neighborhoods, to take the incentive away from them and give the incentive to somebody else who currently doesn't live here. I think we need to make sure that we're giving an abatement to people to invest in their properties. If we, I mean, I think the housing study was very clear on that. If we do not find ways to give people a huge incentive to turn, you know, a 900 square foot house into a 1,200 square foot house, or add a bathroom, or, or a bedroom, or build out a, a safer basement. All those kinds of things are really, really important to the future of the city. Not just for the taxable value, but because of the way the world is changing, we want those houses to be in demand to buy somebody. And, and we need that investment to happen. Like for the life of me, I don't know why we would say, we can do that with a different tool. Like, why would we say, we're going to, you know, you're already paying taxes. You've paid taxes for a long time. We're just going to not charge you anymore for three or four or five years. And, and until you kind of get it paid off or paid down a little bit. And to do away with it for programs like I own and all that that I like, it means we're spending other people's monies on, on that. Let's let, let's let the homeowners themselves spend their own money on it, but give them an incentive to do it and save those funds for programs for people that don't, that don't have the resources to do it themselves. I, I just think that we, we will change the market decidedly for neighborhoods like the one I live in and many of us live in. If homeowners don't have a legit incentive to add on, to build on, uh, to improve the, the homes that they're living in with their own money.
I have a question, because, and I don't know if we have this data, but the housing strategy focused on additions and additional bathrooms. And my understanding is the repair rehab incentive goes well beyond that, right? I mean, that includes pretty much any repair or rehab. You know, a home could have had a kitchen redone three years ago and it could be abated. And it sells, new owner comes in and doesn't like the style and wants to do a completely new kitchen. That would be eligible for, for the rebate under our current program, right?
Yeah, anything that adds value to an existing residential property that increases the total value by at least 5%, is eligible for the current abatement program.
Has to increase the, the value by five.
It does, yep.
Pulling out cabinets and a new sink and countertop isn't going to change the value, is it?
Right, a lot of the things like a, a new driveway, a new roof, uh, new cabinets are likely going to have very minimal impact on the taxable value. It's the, uh, in addition, adding, adding a bedroom, adding a bathroom.
Are most of the existing, I mean, it was 17 million in existence. Is most of that additions and new, new bathrooms? Like what, do we have a breakdown of what that is?
I, I haven't analyzed just what those projects are.
Because in the email that you sent us, you said most of those things would happen anyway.
That's, that's, that's my question is, my, my question to the council was, how many of those improvements to existing structures would not happen if it were not for abatement?
Another example is finishing a basement out. I mean, a lot of new homes don't finish the basement immediately. They come back years later and do that. Is that a decision based on abatement or family size, things of that nature? That would happen regardless of.
Abatement, many people would say, hey, I can just sell my house, move to the suburbs where I've got a house with a finished basement, or I can stay where I am and finish the basement. And that adds value to our city of Des Moines. I'm surprised, you know, we talked about Invest DSM when we, when we did the housing strategy and, and the whole plan with Invest DSM was going to make it so people could age in place, so we could add a bed, add a bathroom, add a bedroom. I don't think we've been real successful with that. They've kind of gone another route and do a lot of new construction. But I think from the last report we received, there really wasn't that many remodels that were done.
I think we'll have to get that data because the majority, the things coming in have been highly remodeled. So we'll get that information.
Let's, let's get that. I think it's, it's hard for me to sit here. I mean, we got an email on Monday saying we were going to discuss this at today's workshop and that developers and builders would be contacted. On Thursday, I checked in with multiple and they had not received anything yet. But then I later learned that the notification actually went to the people that were, that had actually come down and applied for the building permit. Many of those people are not the same people that make the decision that should be at this roundtable to, to discuss what the future plans are. Just want to add, if we go to a three year, I think you need to include, include some lenders in this. Because right now, if I buy a new house and I qualify with the tax abatement, my payments are, are based on the five year tax abatement. If you lower it down to three years, I as a homeowner have to pay, pay, have to, have to, that payment is based on the five year, the full taxes. So that is going to cost people a couple hundred dollars more a month. That can make a big difference about whether I qualify to buy this house or I don't qualify to buy this house. With the idea that many people that are buying, buying any home, they're, they're looking forward. They have hope, they're going to get, get, um, job promotions. They, you know, maybe the kids are out of college now and, and now's their time. They no longer have college bills. So a couple hundred dollars a month makes a big difference to families. And I really like what Chris said. When you look at these numbers, we're the biggest city and we only have 7% of the new builds? That's, I mean, nobody else has that. We need to, we can raise taxes or we can raise, raise revenues. We need to be focusing on raising revenues. The only way we're going to do that is by promoting new construction, new builds and remodels.
I think the whole conversation is can we do that and offer other incentives? So that's what they're looking at and they wanted to bring this forward. So tax abatement isn't the only issue. I mean, there's other ways to, I'm not saying you don't have some or a modification, but there's other ways. So our goal is to look at ways to incentivize.
Well, okay.
So he's said that they're still the beginning phase.
But, but it's on the, it's on tonight's agenda to approve, it's on tonight's agenda to set the hearing date of December 8th. That's only a few weeks away. You would want us to approve these things without having those discussions, without bringing in the people that are making our city grow, who are saying, I'm going to invest in the city of Des Moines by building new homes. We've totally left them out of the conversation. We've left lenders out of the conversation. Yeah, it's nice to say, well, we'll look at other incentives, but you've not given us what those incentives are. I'm not going to vote on something that, that say, oh, well, we're going to work on that. We're going to, we're going to work on that. That doesn't mean anything. What, what are we going to do?
And, and that's part of why we're here today. Yeah, that's a good, good segue is whether or not to keep that set hearing or delay this into 26.
I would prefer to hit the pause button and have some more discussion.
Well, I would hope that discussion would come before the end of the year.
Oh, okay, but, you know, when it goes into effect also is another.
Right, I mean, it's discussion and then the fact part.
I'm not in a hurry. I want to do it right. And this also does, it does impact budget. And I would like to make one other comment, um, as per my notes. And this is dovetailing with what Chris talked about. And maybe this is a workshop, I don't know. And for some of these workshops, this is just minor note, I'd rather we meet at a roundtable and just talk. Can come, but I think it's more productive. I would like to see a roundtable discussion on vision. And maybe a five year review of where we've, just a map of where all of these tax abatements have been. Are they antif, are they truly on the dark corridors as we've talked about? And also talking about some of these other project types, building sizes. Just have a, a broader conversation about vision.
Sure do that.
Okay.
This is, this is the sort of feedback that I was hoping to receive this morning and I appreciate that.
We, like, we might not agree on everything, but I do want to say, you're, you're the right person to lead this. And I appreciate Scott and Cody, like I'm, my, my, my interest is not to fight you, but, um, because I, I think you have much more information and are guided by the right thing. So I'm glad you're doing what you're doing.
Get, get to the actual recommendations and why the recommendations were being made. Get, get to the actual recommendations and why the recommendations were being made in the presentation today. I mean, would have been helpful to understand that piece of, that piece of this to inform our next discussion. I mean, I don't know if there's a little more time, but I would certainly welcome a little better understanding of the baseline, so that our next discussion on this can be a little more.
I assume that we are here because I and others have been talking about the cost of the abatement program. But this is obviously evolving in the direction that it should. It's much broader than that.
I think it was the housing strategy started the whole conversation.
No, but the rationale, I mean, there were specific numbers. So for example, it, you know, the new detached single-family picked a three-year declining, and only for the first 200,000. And the same for the new missing middle. Like, what, what informed that? Like, was there data that informed that? Was it, like, how did those numbers get selected? Because that's what we're talking about, right? We're talking about the next step is, I, I mean, maybe not, maybe it's a binary choice whether or not we do anything. But if the choice is, if we're making changes, what are the right changes? We need to understand what was proposed and why, and what information we would need to make a better choice, right?
Correct. But we don't have a good target of what success looks like. And we've heard that there are different targets that are going to need more discussion. And so I guess I would actually say it's not worth spending the additional time on what these proposals were, because they were more number-centric to get to a certain amount of savings for the Ion and additional revenue. Not as much the other goals that we heard discussed this morning. So I do like the idea of the roundtable goals initiated, and what we can do with the input this morning is break it down into categories and, and pieces of discussion, that then, and only after those conversations, we can come back with the right tools to address those strategies.
So what you're saying is that things like, do we want to focus on rehab versus new construction? And we can pull the information out of the housing strategy, because that's very informative on, on that regard. Um, and, and really even the unit, that the types of units, the pricing of the units. There's probably about 10 or 12 questions for you that we can lay out in an orderly way and get your input and get the public's input on all of it.
I want to get the input of the developers, the people that are making that investment in our city.
And, and absolutely, they, they will be part of that conversation.
So Scott, just to verify what I think I heard, the existing recommendations were made, not necessarily for the goal of what gets built, but in terms of just looking at kind of status quo and how we save a specific amount of dollars?
That was a big motivation, not the entire, but yes.
Okay.
And do we have agreement amongst ourselves that we're going to remove the item from the agenda?
That's the only decision that has to be made right now, and that.
I make that motion?
Well, it's not a motion. It's just giving me input, because I can, I can work with. If there's any concerns about that, I'd appreciate the voice in it now. Yeah.
Yeah, we've got to do it tonight.
All right. That can be changed for tonight, then.
Or we can continue. Do we want to continue it so that there's a deadline to have the next conversation, or?
Can easily put it right back on later, so it's not that big deal to take it off. And we can look at a schedule, use one of these Monday mornings, or an off Monday morning would maybe work better to do more of a roundtable.
To keep it moving.
I think it's very important. I think we need to, we need to be having those conversations with everybody around the table.
I think we have our next step.
Thank you.
Do you have it?
Thank you, Cody.
Thank you for the presentation. Uh, this work session has now concluded, and we will reconvene for our regular meeting at 5 o'clock.